Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of June the 3rd. It looks like we have everyone but Mr. Luna. Is he phoning in? Or is okay? Mr. Luna is...
No, he's out.
I think he's out.
He's absent.
David is excused and absent today. So we have six out of seven, which is pretty good odds if you're a Major League Baseball player. The first item on our agenda is to review and discuss the items on the agenda for the June 7th regular and special council meetings. So council, I know we've got... So just so everyone's clear, we have two meetings on Monday. One will follow the other. The special council meeting is... Mr. Smith, this is... We have to do a separate budget hearing from our regular council meeting, correct?
Correct. It's just a state statute requirement that budgets adopted in a special meeting.
Okay. So essentially be having a hearing after our... The adjournment of our regular council meeting on Monday to discuss the budget. Counsel, any questions on our budget? I know Mr. Thompson has asked a question regarding Agenda Item 5F and getting an update on the PSPRS debt that we're whittling our way at.
Yeah. So we're ready to make that presentation or answer any other questions, whatever.
Go ahead.
I also had a question on 1B. Are we covering that now? Or I can also get my question...
Hold on, hold on. Which item?
This is for the special council meeting on Monday. But I don't know if we're covering that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we will.
Or I can get it answered like...
No, that's fine. Which would you like?
From staff later.
Why don't we start with going in the order of the agenda, which is through the council meeting 5F? And then let's discuss the special council meeting, the budget hearing, because I'm sure there's more to be said about that.
So Mayor, I think item... Yes, we can... We'll have the presentation on the pension plan. So we're going to ask Mike and Sam, or yeah, if they'll come forward, and we have a presentation on that. And this is something we require to do each week. And then after that, Vice Mayor, we can go to...
Well, I think there might be some other questions about Monday's regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I saw a finger or two go up, so... So yeah, let's start with 5F, the PSPRS issue.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Mike Kennington, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. With me is Sam Schultz, our Budget Coordinator in the Office of Management and Budget. Well, thank you for having us this morning. Today, we want to talk about the policy or the city council's annual requirement to accept a pension policy for PSPRS. And as Sam will discuss later, also accepting formally our share of the PSPRS assets and liabilities. We have a great plan that we have that we're proposing also to maintain and stabilize our annual contributions. And Sam will go over that. So, Sam?
Great. So really, the action item for accepting this policy is adopting and understanding that you accept these shared assets and liabilities, as well as the understanding of the policy that we'll go through. So there's different funding objectives that we have with the policy. And for this action item, it is to adopt that policy. So a couple of those funding objectives are to maintain the stability of contributions. So what we've done with this is we have set aside a pension stabilization fund. This is something that we contribute $2 million a year to. And what this does is it builds up a balance for us to account for large increases within a fiscal year. So whether there's large investment increases not hit, or if there's large changes within the laws or state laws or changes, it gives us the ability to kind of stabilize out those contributions with that pension stabilization fund. At the moment, we're sitting at $8 million with that stabilization fund, and we contribute $2 million a year into that. The next one is meeting the fund requirements, so...
I apologize. Before you move off of that, I... So this is to kind of average things out, given that we put many... $2 million aside into this fund to kind of stabilize...
Two things, two things. What Sam's actually speaking about... So there's two things. You're... We're going to talk about a level... Let's call it level funding that we're going to try to get to, and then we're going to talk about that. But we also set aside funds in a stability fund.
Yep.
We've done that because our... Historically, there have been times when, because of state law, court cases, what was the other one you mentioned? Other variables that we don't control. We sometimes... We have gotten big spikes in the pension cost, you know, by $10 million a year or whatever. And that just was putting a lot of pressure. So what we made the decision was to kind of have, if you would like, a rainy day... Not rainy day, but a contingency sitting over to the side. That is separate than the policy we're going to bring to you. But instead of having an inclining payment through the 20-year period, what we're going to suggest to you is we bring it up and have a stable payment coming across. And you'll see that graph here in a second. But those are two different... They sound similar, but they're not. The contingency that Sam's talking about is really just to mitigate against... And it's just happened within the last, what, five, six years where there's been court cases, state legislation, or PSPRS hasn't kept up to their investment expectations, and it's created... Then they pass those costs on to us. So that's what this is.
Correct.
And it helps us when we're talking to our rating agencies, too, to show them we have this kind of reserve sitting over here in case those events take place.
So in order to draw out of that fund, does that take... I mean, the manager would come to council and say, hey, we had such-and-such unexpected event occur this year, so we need to draw down from those funds?
Yeah, Mayor, I think probably during the budget process, we would tell you that, hey, we had the spike in pension costs, and as a result, we're going to ask council... You know, just we're going to let you know we're going to draw down on that reserve and build it up. So every part... Every year when we establish the amount, the payment in the pension, we probably have that conversation.
Good to know. Thank you.
Great. The next one is meeting the fund requirements. So this is including on the city's multi-year financial forecast for pension. We'll go into a little bit more detail of what we're planning on doing, but historically, what we have done is increased PSPRS costs into our forecast by about inflation of 6% each year. So year over year, we continue to see that increase. And the reason for that was based upon historical trends of what we've seen coming through the actuarial reports. And then the last one is defining the funding ratio targeting the timeline. So we're looking to become, you know, 100% funded per our payment plan, our amortization plan. Right now, we're at 21 years, so we're looking to have that fully funded come June 30th of 2042. So the current unfunded liability and funded status for each police and fire noted here. So for Mesa Fire Medical, they have a current liability of $232 million and a funding status of 49%. And police has a $470 million unfunded liability with a funded status of 46%. As discussed previously, we are currently paying on the 21-year unfunded liability amortization schedule. So this is just to kind of show a trend of what's happened the past four years of taking a look back. As you can see, the funding status has continually decreased year over year, even though we have been budgeting up to what the annual required contribution is. But due to some of the causes, which we'll cover on the next slide, we have not been meeting those targets from PSPRS's side, meeting those investment goals, and also other court cases and assumption variables within their model. And as you can see, the one below, you can see that unfunded liability trend continues to rise. So here are some of the causes that are causing that. One of the big ones that you'll see there is the increase... Or sorry, the decrease on interest on investments. For PSPRS's assumption in their model, they are saying that they are going to meet an investment of 7.3%. Last year, investment returns net the fees came out 2.91%.
That has a little bit of an impact in that schedule.
Have they ever... Has PSPRS ever hit their assumption?
They have hit their assumption in the past, but there has been decline trend. That's why they have also started to reduce that assumption from 7.5% to 7.3%. So if you look at the 20- or 10-year average, they'll be closer to that goal, but in the past few years, it has been that declining... That decline amount.
And again, who... We're responsible for funding this, but we're not responsible for managing the investments. And that's governed by a PSPRS board?
That's appointed by the governor, the state legislature. There's a variety of different appointees on there.
Apparently, they've never heard of index funds? All right. Sorry, I guess that was a rhetorical comment.
You notice we're being very quiet on that one, because silence is concurrence.
Sorry. One of the other large changes in assumption was also PSPRS changed their... Changed your actuaries to foster and foster, and they did review some of their assumptions. And one of the things that they found was their life expectancy or their mortality tables were off. They were seeing that people in the PSPRS plant were living longer. So they did make changes to that, which then extended out some of those payment periods. And then the last one is the payroll growth assumption, which we'll cover a bit more, is a variable PSPRS showing a 3.5%, and the state average has been about 1.4%. So as we talked about with our pension on our prior forecast, what we have done is we historically have done a 6% inflation increase year over year, which, as you can see, adds about a $4 to $5 million cost increase each year to the budget and perpetually into the forecast. So this is where we kind of currently sat with the historical trends and what we'll be looking to do.
So let's just pause there for a second, Sam. So this is the current schedule that is paying this off over 21 years, that we currently are on this slope. And so what it means today is that, you know, today, 2022, what is that number, $64, $65 million on that first point?
That would be today's annual profit.
But you can see it's growing, so by the time we're making the final payment, it would be over... Scheduled to be over $100 million. And you can see, obviously, those points in between. We don't think that's very sustainable for the long term, although it gets us to pay... We pay off the... We paid off the unfunded liability by that point. $100 million is, you know, our general fund budget today is what?
$400 to $500 billion.
So it'd be more than 20... About more than 20%, just on the pension alone. So we need to do something. So that's what we're talking... We want to propose today.
So what we're trying to do is take some of those variables out ourselves. One of those is the payroll growth assumption. Payroll growth assumption affects the unfunded liability on the credit. When it comes to the normal cost of the general, if there was no unfunded liability, payroll growth would not play a factor, because you're just paying the people that are in the program. But when it comes to the unfunded liability, it is acting as a credit to that contribution assumption. So what we would like to do is remove that out and work to stabilize that unfunded liability payment across our forecasts. So we feel that by removing that, it creates... Kind of takes away that variability of what PSPRS is adding to the model. So what you see here is what we're projecting based upon taking that assumption out and a couple adjustments. What we feel after doing some calculation on it is we can stabilize our payment out if we do a flat payment of about $78 million, plus or minus a few. But what that will do is we increase the investment at the beginning, and that increased investment at the beginning will then grow on more interest, which then stabilizes out our payment. So that was an initial investment of $28 to $30 million. What that does is it potentially provides $178 million over that 21-year amortization schedule.
And you can just see, for purposes of doing budgeting, it begins while it's... Takes more contributions early in the early years, but it allows some more predictability as much as we can. We don't control all the variables, but it gives us, we think, a better factor, including to put in our long-term forecast. And so we're... We'd be significantly increasing that number in the early years, but you can see what it does in those out years. And so the out years, we may have a payment plus or minus $80 million versus that plus $100 million. So this is kind of... We're doing the right thing, not just for today, but obviously for 20 years from now for the city of Mesa. So that's the plan. We're going to make that adjustment. And it's already built into the budget that you have seen. It's built into the current forecast that we've developed. So we're just recommending that kind of adjustment in the plan. And then may just share with you today, you know, what sometimes when we talk about compensation and benefits to employees, you know, this is one of those that we need to monetize and talk about, that, you know, one of the reasons that benefit is so expensive is that the benefit after... During retirement is fairly significant for public safety personnel. Today, we pay about $60,000 per employee per year on that unfunded liability. With this change, we'll be closer to $74,000. So that's outside of the base salary, health benefits. This is just the pension cost. Now, that unfunded liability isn't... It includes those who are currently employed, but obviously, it recognizes those who are employed but are retired. But that gives you a sense, on a per capita basis, of what we're contributing in pension cost to pay down that liability over the next 20 years. Anyway, so that's the plan that we would propose for council to... We recommend to council for your approval.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Chris, can you remind me, where do these funds come from, the dollars generated to pay for this pension fund?
Right out of the general fund.
Right out of the general fund?
Yep.
Okay, general fund dollars.
Could we define the term "fully funded"? Because I think sometimes people think, oh, look, our public safety personnel are this close, you know, we're... They're at risk of not having their pensions funded. And that's not the case. So what is... We aspire to be fully funded, but what does that mean?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you for the question. Fully funded means that we have assets, enough assets in the plan that are equal to the present value of all the liabilities that have to be paid out in the future. So present value means just the value of it today, and we have enough assets to pay for those over time.
So in other words, if we stopped contributing to the pension fund, we would have enough money in there to pay for everybody's pensions going forward?
Yes, with all the... Hypothetically, that all the assumptions are met, including the investment assumptions, that all the liabilities would be paid. That's right.
And of course, we're not going to stop contributing to the pension funds.
No, no. It's essentially building up enough of a principle with PSPRS at that point that there was... There's no liability going forward.
Right.
Now, today, there's no risk of anybody ever losing their pension. It just means it just costs us more, and it takes longer to make those payments. So, you know, the city of Mesa is not going anywhere. It's not like a private company that can't pay that liability. Those best practices are, and the determination is to try to get that paid... Come up with a schedule to do that in 20 years, and that's what we've... And that's what we're following right here.
Mr. Aradia.
Question on the reserve balance. Is it the idea to have $2 million every year? If we draw down, replenish it the next year? Or what's the idea there?
Well, I can't... Did we decide on the cap on that, Mike?
No, currently, we have it at $2 million a year.
No, but the total, the cumulative number.
And we don't have a cap on it currently.
Right. So the idea is to pull that, because our experience has been in the last five to six years, is why we're telling you... And Sam is trying to be careful about explaining the variables that are impacting us that we don't control. And so if we use that as a cushion to adjust for unforeseen variables that come from PSPRS, where they didn't meet their investment returns, they miscalculated life expectancy in that variable.
Yeah. Another variable is a big variable is the change in their assumptions, right? So if they brought their investment assumption down to 7%, let's say, that would have a huge impact on our unfunded liability as well.
So we'd have to add more into that contribution and a contribution. So we use that reserve to contribute and make that... If that reserve... And now it's only... What did we say, 10 today?
It'll be 10 at the end of this fiscal year.
So we'll watch that. I mean, at some point, if it gets too much, we can always use that to make part of the payment one time in a year on our $70, $80 million. We could use it that way. The good news is it's sitting there to be used for the pension as either a payment for that annual payment or as a future reserve contingency against unforeseen changes in the pension, because in the past, we've had to scramble and pull it out of other, you know, we've had to reduce costs in the general fund in order to make those payments.
Okay. So it accumulates if we don't use it?
Right, yeah. We just put it in a reserve. We put it in the pension reserve fund, and we can share that with council each year during the budget and talk about our assumptions. And if one year, instead of taking the whole $80 million out of the general fund, maybe we've grown that to, say, $20 million, maybe we could take, you know, $4 million out of that in that one time in that year, make a... Make a contribution from the savings.
Wow. And then second question on the slide of unfunded liability. The annual change there, did you say it's 6%? Approximately 6%? Or for both police and fire, is it... Is the amount that it increases just varies each year based on retirement or...
It will vary each year dependent upon... So the change that's shown there is the actuals from the 2019 report to 2020 report from the actuaries of saying this is what the actual investment growth was, this was the change in salaries were, and all... And netting everything out of saying this is your current status funding. And we were just putting the dollar figure to show, even though we contributed close to $60 million last year, we still had a decrease in our fund balances or increase in our liability at that time.
But these numbers of $7 million for fire and $31 million for police, does that vary substantially each year, or do they maintain the same?
So the goal is, and what we want to do with the $78 million, that we'll start investing in that upfront costs will... Next year, when we come back to this, you'll see that the unfunded liability has decreased, and that's what we're hoping for. Right now, we're going backwards, as we... You can see from the, I believe, the slide after that showed the trend. That's kind of been the trend of how much that unfunded liability has continually decreased year over year. Or sorry, increased year over year.
And Mayor, Councilmember Aradia, that's a very... That's variable. Those amounts, they change every year, and that's what kind of Sam was saying. That's what we're trying to eliminate, trying to eliminate that variability. And the first way, one of the biggest things is the payroll growth assumptions, and we're trying to bring that down to zero, essentially eliminating that as a variability.
And making a very conservative estimate, as you are doing.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions on this agenda item? All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Mr. Freeman, did you have a question on something else from Monday's agenda?
I did, Mayor, and I think it was 4E. I was just looking at some of the contractual obligations with the household hazardous waste. And it seemed like those that bid on the contract were really close within like four points of scoring. So I just... I mean, that was a really close, competition-wise, and I don't know if there's any more comments. Scott, I don't know, both here or whomever. I mean, I didn't know who we were using before, and if this is a new third-party contractor for the HHW, and... But we had some very close competitive bids. Sorry to pull you up, but I do read this information.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I actually have Lauren Whitaker here with me today. She runs the Household Hazardous Materials Facility and took the lead on the procurement process. I'm going to let her answer that question.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman. We had three submittals on this contract, and two of the submittals were very close, but ultimately, we went with the higher-scoring company, so...
What's the current status today? Do you have an outside group vendor that you use today?
Yes, we have an outside group we use today, Care Environmental Services. They scored the lowest out of the three.
Yeah, I was just curious. I couldn't remember who we were using prior to this change in contract, so it seemed like Clean Harbors won it by less than four points.
Yes. And Clean Harbors is a contractor that we have used in the past, too. So they used to help us with our household hazardous waste events before the facility was built. So this is a contractor that we're very familiar with and have worked with for years, so...
Okay, good. I just wanted some clarification, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Aradia.
I have a question on another item.
Yes, please.
4F. Sorry. Item 4F, just curious, is this on the streetlight monitoring system? Is this both update and new? New streetlights being upgraded? And what's the progress of citywide installation?
Hey, Orlando.
Hey, good morning, Council. Mayor and Council, my name's Orlando Otero. I'm the Deputy Director for Transportation. Yes, this is to support our LED conversion. And so we need the $1.7 million to continue to support the LED conversion. We came last year to increase the amount. We just want to increase it this year for the subsequent years.
Do you have an update kind of status where we are on the replacement program?
We're about a third of the way completed with the conversion.
And we're doing that all in-house?
All in-house, yes.
And this lighting, as I recall, gives you some flexibility on adjusting the lighting?
Right, so it's the... Sorry, it's the fixtures. So the lighting fixture itself and the nodes that allow us to communicate with the light, the lighting fixture, so we can dim it as necessary. And also allows us to identify outages.
Okay. Is there specific zones that you're concentrating, or is it just all across the city?
That's a good question. Right now, we're just hitting the outages, and we're meeting our performance measures with hitting the outages.
Okay. So we have... You have to go there. You have to go there anyway.
Right.
Because that's happening, you're replacing, changing.
Yes, we're not... So yes, whenever we have an outage, we're changing... We're converting it to an LED. And so, again, just with the amount of outages coming in, we're hitting our performance metrics or measures.
What was... How many... How many years did we say this was going to take to do the whole city? Do you recall?
I believe it's a seven-year project.
Yeah. So we're at least a year into it?
Yes.
So yeah, so about six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions regarding Monday night's regular council meeting? Thank you, Orlando. If you don't mind, Counsel, I know that the Vice Mayor has asked a question then about the special budget hearing on Monday, and I do... I know there's a lot of things to say about that, but we... I've noticed we've got some great people that have been in our waiting room to participate in the next agenda item. And if you, Counsel, if you don't mind, let's skip to that, just so we don't have... They've been waiting already a half an hour to participate in this meeting, and let's hear from them, and then we'll... Before our next item, we'll be moving on to the budget hearing. So let's move on now to Agenda Item 2A, which is to hear a presentation and discuss the findings of a citizen survey conducted by ASU's Morrison Institute for Public Policy on policing and community safety in Mesa. Chief, good to have you with us.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Council, and it's my pleasure to introduce our presenters this morning. I just wanted to say, you know, building trust and legitimacy and working with our community is a core value of the Mesa Police Department and the city of Mesa. And late last year, we wanted to see how we're doing. We wanted to measure from our community how we're doing in that regard in a lot of categories. So we asked the Morrison Institute of Public Policy to conduct that survey for us, independent and bipartisan, and you'll hear today those results, which were very positive, not just for the Mesa Police Department, but for all the departments within the city and the city of Mesa in general. So I want to make sure that that's clear, just on, you know, the quality of life in city of Mesa as a whole. And it really gives us things that we're hearing from our community to work on and to get better and to continuously improve what we know we have to do in a lot of these categories. So it was really good feedback. It's independent, and I think it's important, not just for our department, but for all the city of Mesa. So I will introduce Andrea Witsett. She's the Director of the Morrison Institute of Public Policy. She's on the bottom left of my screen. Allison Cook Davis and Steve Kyler. So they've done this presentation a couple times. We cannot do it service. They've done an amazing job, and this is their project, so I will turn it over to them.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor and Chief. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Well, it is really a pleasure to be here today and for our team to share these community survey findings with the council. So as you may know, Morrison Institute for Public Policy is part of the Watts College at ASU, and we've been serving the state for nearly forty years. As the Chief said, we produce nonpartisan research and we do this on a broad range of policy issues that are of importance to Arizonans. I think it's worth noting, we don't lobby, we don't advocate, and so we approach our research in a very objective manner with the goal of informing residents and policymakers and really elevating the discourse around policy options, doing this with clear data and analysis. So when the Mesa Police Department approached us about this community survey, it was a really good fit for our expertise and for our commitment to doing research that is meaningful and most importantly, actionable. So we worked closely with the executive team, with Assistant Chief Rankin, with Commander Bellows and others, to design a survey instrument that would accurately capture public attitudes, perceptions and priorities on a very wide range of topics, so including quality of life, we looked at mental health response, homelessness, police technology, contact, professionalism, the use of force and overall satisfaction. And most importantly, we wanted this survey to provide useful information that would touch on issues and policy choices that the city and Mesa PD are presently considering. So as the Chief said, here to present today from our team, Research Director Allison Cook Davis and our Communications Director Steve Kilar, they'll be covering both the methodology and then walking you through the findings and will be happy to field questions. So let me turn it over to Allison.
Thank you, Andrea. This survey of Mesa residents was conducted to provide actual data for the Mesa Police Department and allow them to better understand the attitudes and opinions of the, of the residents that they serve. Next slide, please. Today, we will walk through the methodology and then proceed through the seven sections of the survey. It was organized internally by these topics, as you can see, but to help us with the flow of questions, but participants were not provided with these categories as part of the poll. It was just an organizing principle here. Next slide, please. In collaboration with the Mesa Police Department, Morrison Institute for Public Policy developed polling questions to better understand perceptions of Mesa residents. We worked with a polling company to administer a telephone poll to eight hundred and eleven Mesa residents. Data was collected over a two-week time period and the margin of error for the full, for the full sample was 3.4 percentage points at the ninety-five percent confidence level. The sample was weighted slightly to more clearly match the US Census data for Mesa. Next slide, please. And a little more detail on all those numbers I just threw out. Mesa residents were randomly sampled, which means that everyone in Mesa had an equal chance of being called, but we calculate a margin of error because with a sample, it won't be exact like a census. So here, it's three percentage points. And then finally, we tend to use a ninety-five percent confidence interval, and this is how we are certain as researchers, that the margin of error is that it's identified, the results are in the identified range. So ninety-five out of a hundred samples, we would, would be in our range. So that is the research methodology and I will turn it over to Stephen Kilar to walk us through the results.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having us this morning. There's some really fantastic findings that I hope you'll, you'll find valuable in your work as policymakers for the city of Mesa. We're going to start out just by talking a little bit about the quality of life and crime in Mesa. Let's see, can we go to the next slide? There's a lot of slides, so unfortunately, you're going to hear me say next slide pretty frequently to this morning. Major finding here is that eight in ten people are satisfied with the quality of life in Mesa. You know, that's a terrific finding. It's also consistent with the 2016 survey that the Mesa Police Department did. You know, very few people are saying that they're, that they are not happy with the quality of life in Mesa. Next slide. In order to determine a baseline, get a baseline sense of concern about particular issues related to public safety, we asked a series of six questions to, to understand people's level of concern about these six issues, okay? So this is, it's important to understand that this is not a ranking question, even though it appears to look like it's a ranking on this slide. Each of these questions were asked individually. Oh, can we just, yeah, thank you. And people who said on a Likert scale of, of five, that they either had a four or a five level of concern are captured in this percentage that you're seeing here. So of the six issues we asked about, fifty-six percent said that they were concerned about homelessness versus thirty-one point nine percent said that they were concerned about police use of force. And then the other categories were crime generally, school safety, mental illness in the community and human trafficking. So I've got a couple of big takeaways I'm going to emphasize for you this morning, and the first big takeaway that you're going to see come up several times during this presentation is that the residents of Mesa are concerned about homelessness. It, it appears again and again throughout the survey. The next few slides are related to what we've identified here as community policing. These are questions that try and assess the public's engagement with the Police Department and also their interest in Police Department programs. So about forty percent of respondents said that the Mesa Police Department makes it easy for community members to provide input, okay? That's, that's a pretty good finding, I think, for just, you know, understanding whether your community feels like they can reach out to an agency. A notable finding here is that about one in five, twenty-one point six percent, said that they were not sure or didn't know. You know, I don't necessarily know that that's a bad thing, I think it just means that most people, you know, there's, there's a large section of the population that hasn't felt that it necessary, right, to figure out how that they can, how they can reach out to the Police Department. Similarly, about forty percent of respondents said that the Mesa Police Department communicates effectively with community members. This is just a, a question to help the Police Department understand how they can better communicate with the community. You know, not, not surprisingly, email, text message and social media are the preferred methods of communication from the Police Department. Automated phone calls were not very popular. Was there a question over there?
That provoked a chuckle, but, and I'm guessing that's because that's what we use, isn't it? Automated phone calls, so we've discovered that, that, that's a useful thing to learn from this survey. We don't? These are robo-calls?
Yeah.
But it, yeah. Isn't our history that sometimes we do that? I mean, if there's a, are we using robo-calls right now? No?
Oh, are you thinking, Mayor, it's like the incident?
Oh, like a sense, yeah, for an emergency, yes. Yeah, the reverse, yeah.
But I think this is really intended where we're trying to communicate a message, a positive message, engagement with the Police Department.
So in an emergency, we still might press the, the robo-call?
Yeah, because we need to tell people to stay in their home, don't come out, yeah.
I just don't think people want us just to call them out of the blue and just talk to them.
No one's going to argue with that. That's right. I'm sorry, but thank, thank you for, for listening to our chuckles, but please go ahead.
Okay. So this next question is to assess the public's interest in several Police Department programs. And so, we asked people, again, individually, so this isn't a ranking, how interested are you in a scale of one to five in these programs? Sixty percent responded that they are interested in learning more about the city's strategies for reducing homelessness. The Mesa Police Department's Transparency Initiatives, Community Forums and Real-Time Crime Center, you know, there's interest from the mid-forties on those issues, mid-thirties on the Police Department's Community Engagement Academy. Again, you'll see on that slide that, you know, you're seeing a high level of interest in homelessness, as I, as I mentioned earlier. This next section that we're going to move into is really trying to assess the community's concerns about mental health in Mesa. And what we've done here, so the next series of questions is a little unusual and you may not be familiar with, it, it, it's just, it, it takes a minute to understand what we're asking, I think, in these series of questions. So the next series of questions poses a series of three different options for how the city might choose to respond to calls for service, okay? And we asked people to assess those response options for three different scenarios. Calls for mental health crises, which is the one you see on the slide in front of you, calls for substance abuse and calls about people experiencing homelessness. So for each of these scenarios, we asked who should respond to those calls? Only police, only non-police alternatives, or a team of police officers and non-police alternatives? And as you're going to see over the next few slides, in every scenario, a team response was strongly preferred. So here, we see that seventy percent of respondents said that they wanted to see a team response to calls about mental health crises.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question on that?
Sure.
Does team respond, my understanding is that the, what we aspire to do and we're trying to implement now is a triage system where we get a phone call and then the dispatcher decides, I either need a sworn officer or I need a mental health professional to respond to this scenario. So that, that's my, I, I get that as my definition of a team response, but it, do people, what do other people think a team response means? Does that mean it's an officer and a mental health professional or there, there's been a triage that's gone on to decide either or?
Mayor, Counsel, the triage will decide what the best type of response will be and it may be a team response. We may send a mental health professional with an officer or we may send, send a mental health professional with a, with a fire crew. It depends, depending on whether the issue is more medical or more safety-related. So our triage will try to pair up very well with that slide in the fact that we will be trying to send the best, most efficient resources to the calls. I know we come, I think, within the next week or two to Counsel with the presentation we provided, public safety, but our ultimate goal is that the triage gets the proper resource there and it could well end up being teams, it could be individual responses, depending on the situation. We're working very closely with the community to make sure we give the proper response that each call requires.
Well, Mayor, I think the, well, the survey is saying, and the public's not going to know all this inside-baseball stuff, but what they're saying is, I think, and maybe I can be corrected, is they don't think the best response is a, just a...
Exclusively.
Yeah, non-sworn solution or just a police office response. And so, Mayor, to your point, I think any combination of that, and, and I don't know what someone's assuming when they're answering the question, but I think they see that there's a benefit of having a trained professional and law enforcement combined. I think that's the simplest way I'd try to look at it.
Yeah, I, I get that and it, I guess I retract my question because that would be a pretty sophisticated, we don't want, we don't poll the public on the fine detailed points of what it, what a quote-unquoteed team is, right? So it, it would really be police officers and slash or non-police alternatives is kind of what we're, the way we're implementing it, right? Okay. Way, so, okay. Thank you.
And in response to that, Mayor, I would also say that I do think that we see from these results that if the population were more, had more information about how the triage is happening and the percentage of calls that were going out with two people, only a non-police alternative, only officers, we may actually see one of these other lines going up, right? I think that the assumption is, most people are assuming that, that when you call the police, it's an officer who responds, okay? But if they had a better understanding that that's not actually how it operates and that things were working well, for instance, with only non-police alternatives, level of support for non-police alternatives may, may rise. Conversely, if, if they found out that, you know, all the calls where police were responding to were going well, right, and had that information, that line for only police officer responses might go up. This is really a, a response to a perception and if you can communicate to them and change that perception, these lines might change. So again, for calls about substance abuse, you know, very high level of interest, not quite as high as about mental health service calls for the teams, but sixty-three point eight percent of respondents said they'd like to see a team response here. And for calls about people experiencing homelessness, we saw, we see a slight decline in the interest in team response and a slight increase in only police, non-police alternatives. So here, this slide is showing you comparing these three questions across each other. So you can see that support for teams is highest for mental health crises, whereas support for non-police alternatives only is highest for people experiencing homelessness. Now, it's one thing to ask people what they, they want, right? It's another thing to ask people whether they're willing to pay for it. And so, these next few questions get at the issue of whether people are willing to spend public funds on hiring the people to create these teams or provide these non-police responses. So in this slide, you're going to see that there is a high level of support among the people of Mesa to hire mental health professionals to handle non-violent mental health crisis calls. And it's really worth noting here that fifty-five point nine percent are at the top of this scale, they're very supportive of this. And then when you add this with people who are simply supportive, we reach three-quarters of the population. People are also very supportive of hiring substance abuse counselors to respond to substance abuse calls. Again, more than half of the respondents, so more than half of the people of Mesa are very supportive of hiring substance abuse counselors to help respond to substance abuse calls. And before we get into that, I just want to say that, you know, this is the big takeaway number two for me from this data, is that people are interested in the team response. Again, that may change if they find out, you know, more information about the actual response system that's being used through triage right now. But they're interested in the team response and they're willing to, to use public funds to pay for it. To get a little bit better sense of the level of concern about homelessness in Mesa, we asked a similar question to what you saw previously, but on its own before a number of other questions about homelessness. And you'll see again, which is essentially reflective of the earlier question, sixty percent of respondents said they are concerned about homelessness in Mesa. After that question, we asked people where they're interested in using public funds to help people experiencing homelessness. And we offered them four options, providing temporary shelter, offering mental health care, offering drug treatment, or offering permanent housing. And you can see that temporary shelter received the highest level of support for the use of public funds and permanent housing received the, the least, but it was still about half of the respondents. Our final question here about homelessness was whether people agreed with the following statement, arresting people experiencing homelessness for minor criminal offenses is an effective public safety strategy. And the majority of respondents said that they do not think that arresting people experiencing homelessness for minor criminal offenses is effective. And this is, as I understand it, consistent with the Mesa Police Department's practices. We asked a few questions about policing technology and traffic enforcement, everybody's favorite topics. And these, this next, these next questions are, were, were put out there in order to determine the level of public support for connecting surveillance cameras out in the community with the Police Department's systems, all right? So we asked people to tell us which of these two statements that you see in bold before you, they most agree with, all right? Would it help keep the community safe if when crime is suspected, the police had real-time access to video feeds from businesses? Or would it be a privacy concern when crime is suspected, if when crime is suspected, the police had real-time access to video feeds from businesses? And you can see that the majority of people in Mesa found that it would be a, a public safety benefit. It would help keep the community safe if the police had real-time access to these video feeds from businesses. We asked the same question about real-time video feeds from schools and the level of support for community safety increased. You can see eighty percent of respondents said that if when crime is suspected, the police had real-time access to video feeds from schools, they think it would help keep the community safe. Big takeaway number three that you can see here is that solid majorities are comfortable with connecting businesses and school video feeds to the police when crime is suspected. Body cams, now this is just an unbelievable number here. You know, ninety percent support for something is something that is rarely seen in polling, but ninety-three point eight percent of respondents said that Mesa Police Department should purchase an on-body camera for every police officer. And about two-thirds of respondents are very supportive of using public funds for purchasing these cameras. So again, I want to emphasize that it's two-thirds saying that they're very supportive. When you add in, you know, just supportive, you reach over eighty percent. So body cameras are very popular and people are willing to spend money for them. We asked a question about drone use in certain scenarios. The scenarios are there in the bulleted list and in general, people were very supportive of using drones for these scenarios. Search and rescue, again, a percentage above ninety percent, really remarkable. Photographing crime scenes, eighty-five. Documenting fatal crashes, eighty-four. Felony suspect searches, eighty-one. We asked whether people would support the use of drones by law enforcement as an alternative to police helicopters and support dips to a slightly smaller majority. I think that that result is probably simply because people are not familiar with all of the uses of police helicopters. Oh, red light cameras and speed cameras, everyone's favorite topics. A slim majority support red light cameras at major intersections. Fifty-four point two percent, three-quarters support the use of speed cameras in school zones. 54.2%, three-quarters support the use of speed cameras in school zones. The next section is about police contact. So about a quarter of respondents said that they have been a victim of crime in Mesa, okay? You know, this, this was really, so that question that you're seeing over on the left side of the screen, victim of crime, we asked that simply to get the result in the right side, whether people reported the crime to the police, because we wanted to know about people's comfort with reaching out to the police when they're the victims of crime. And, you know, a pretty high percentage said that they reported that crime to the police. So of the people, about 220, 226 people who reported being a victim of crime, nearly everyone reported that crime to the police. Fairly high levels of positive experiences with Mesa Police Department officers. So most respondents, 64.6% said that their experience at Mesa Police Department officers were mostly positive. Notably, you know, echoing this slide we saw earlier about the communication with the police and whether they had familiarity with how to, how to provide input to the police, you know, a little over 20% said that they haven't had any contact with the police. We asked a funnel question prior to the question you're seeing on your screen to determine whether people had police contact with, whether they had contact that was initiated by the police department over the last year. Of the 811 respondents, 98 of them said that they had contact that was initiated by the police department, and nearly all of those people said that the officer sufficiently explained their actions in the interaction. Again, this is, this is slightly higher than a similar question that was asked in 2016, where 87% of respondents said that during their most recent contact with a member of the Mesa Police Department, the employee treated them professionally. We did ask several questions about use of force. About half of the respondents, so when you add up the two green bars here, 51.1% of the Mesa Police Officers said, 51.1% of respondents said Mesa Police Officers only use the amount of force necessary to accomplish their tasks. Again, it's worth noting that 10.8% said that they were not sure, don't know, that's a pretty high level of don't know, but I don't think that that's unexpected because, you know, many members of the public feel like they're unfamiliar with the technical aspects of use of force. So we asked, you know, with, people are coming into this question with use of force on their mind, right? We just asked them about it. Then we asked them how supportive they are of using public funds for de-escalation training, where officers would learn strategies to reduce the likelihood of injury or death. 83% said that they're supportive of using public funds for de-escalation training. There's almost no opposition to that. So overall satisfaction of priorities. In general, people are satisfied with the Mesa Police Department. You know, we've got 68.6% saying, you know, that they're in the satisfied or very satisfied categories. You know, a big chunk of people in the middle, but very few people saying that they're dissatisfied. Similarly, with community safety, you know, community safety, satisfaction with public safety in Mesa is high. There is a significant share of people who are sort of non-committal in the middle of this, but there are very few people who, who are outright saying that they are dissatisfied with public safety in Mesa. And then finally, we asked one priority question. So this is, this is essentially a ranking question where we asked people to pick out their top priority from this list of six things. So which of these six things would you like the city of Mesa to prioritize in the coming year? Body cameras, hiring more mental health professionals, training police officers in de-escalation, hiring more officers, or providing more support for people experiencing homelessness? There is essentially equal support for on-body cameras, hiring mental health professionals, and de-escalation training. There's not high support for hiring, for making it a priority, a number one priority to hire more officers, or support for the homeless. Now, this is one of the most surprising results to me in this survey. Why support for the homeless is so low when concern is so high? And so how do we explain that when we saw the level of concern at 60% earlier in this presentation? But the priority being so low and when we ask people to pick their number one priority? And I think that there's two reasons, at least, you know, we'll never know for sure, but I think that there's two good reasons for why this might have happened. And the first is that the last option there, providing more support for people experiencing homelessness, is not as specific as the other selections. And people may have been less willing to put their support behind a vague statement. But more importantly, I think the second reason that support for homelessness as a priority may be lower is because the concern about homelessness that we saw earlier, it could be captured in the hiring more mental health professionals to respond to crisis calls line. People may be essentially equating these two things in their minds. After all, earlier in the survey, we did ask them, as one of the options for addressing homelessness, whether more mental health professionals should be hired. So they may be thinking, well, out of these two options to provide support for the homeless, I'm going to pick the more specific one about hiring mental health professionals. So one way to think about that is if we dropped out one of those two options, support for the homeless may have gone up in the priority level, in the priority ranking. Now, the last thing I want to say about that final slide is that I don't, don't interpret that slide to mean that 85% of people saying, are saying that they don't want to hire more officers, right? All this slide is telling you is that that is not the number one priority for them out of this, these categories, out of these five categories, okay? So, you know, take that really with the understanding that this is asking for a number one priority and is not saying that they don't want, you know, one of these things in particular. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very informative, very useful. Thank you to the Morrison Institute for fulfilling your mission and providing great information to, to local governments. That was wonderful. I'm sure there's a lot, Chief, anything you want to say to put a bow on that?
No, I, again, you know, I think this is a reflection as a city as a whole. You know, a lot of these questions are tied into what all the great departments are doing. But, you know, and just to pass on, you know, this is, these are results of the support that we get from Mayor, Council, and City Management. So, you know, and, and we have work to do, and we know we have work to do in a lot of those categories and more. So we're just dedicated to that process improvement, and I appreciate the time to allow the Morrison Institute to come in and present.
Mayor, could I just quickly, can I just, again, I want to take the Morrison Institute. After I received this presentation, I was, just felt like this is something we needed to share with everyone, because this is a very credible, you know, process that was gone through. I think the Morrison Institute brings that credibility, removed from the city during the survey itself, so I appreciate their professionalism and the thoroughness and the explanation, I think is very helpful. But I also would say this is a huge credit to the men and women of the Mesa Police Department. I mean, we, there's a certain national narrative out there, there's a lot of challenges with public safety and policing across the country, and not to say that we're immune from that, but I think the relationship between a Mesa Police Officer and this community of Mesa is outstanding, and it's, it's a proud moment for us, and we want people to know about it. As the Chief said, we know we can get better, and that last slide of all those issues on there, we take those as, all those things are important for us, right, to work on, not just any one of them. And we're, we're hiring more officers, we're looking at continuing to increase the number of body cameras, and we're going to have a presentation next Thursday, Mayor, that we brought to the Public Safety Committee last week, last week, and, and on the mental health response too. So anyway, thank you to Morrison Institute, and thank you to the men and women of the Mesa Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we do have a few comments and questions, we're not quite done. Mr. Reddian.
Question to the Morrison folks, when you weighted the sample, you know, having Mesa being 30% Latino, wondering if within the cross tabs or the details of information, any of these questions popped up differently as far as numbers-wise with different segments of Mesa's population? That's the first question.
I can, I can answer that a little bit. In terms of the, the sample, it was weighted for the demographics of Mesa. We did not do any cross tabs like by race, ethnicity, or other factors, and this was largely because once we start looking at smaller subgroups, the margin of error starts to increase, and so we weren't really comfortable with, with there being sort of wider margins of error, so I don't have the, the data broken down. But I, but I can tell you also that the, the sample was distributed among all of the different zip codes in Mesa, so there was a presentation from all zip codes within Mesa. And the Latino, I'd have to look up the, the percentage, but there was a large Latino, or relatively large to the population Latino respondents.
Perfect. Thank you. And then questions on, maybe for the Chief, the, on the, on the camera, body worn cameras, is every officer, does every patrol officer have body, the, the cameras on them? Or what's, what's the status of having every police officer with a camera on?
That's a good question. We've had the body worn camera system up and running since 2012, so we were one of the first to do that. So it's a robust program. Every patrol officer has a body worn camera, and then some of our specialty units, but not all the specialty units, not the first-line supervisors. So that's what we're looking to do, is expand the program so we can cover all the sworn officers. But our front-facing officers have had body worn cameras, every single one of them.
Since 2012?
Yes. 2012 was a start, a rollout, so it wasn't a complete rollout in 2012, but, you know, by 2014, we were up and running with every officer having body worn cameras. But we just need to expand that into other areas.
And then as far as use of video surveillance, some of the questions around schools and businesses, what's the, what's the status of working in partnership with those entities now on using video to, to assist in, in potential crimes happening?
Mayor, Councilmember Reddian, we are in the process of doing that because we're in the process of building our real-time crime center. It's really a public safety center. So we're working with those, with the school district, which has already been done, and all the businesses to tie into the software so we can do just that. So that, that's, that's in progress right now as we speak.
Do we currently do any of that, or is that just coming online?
Councilmember Reddian, it'll be coming online. We don't have that capability yet, but we're building it.
All right. Thank you.
So I know there's other questions, but Chief, do, do you have a list of action items that have, that are the result of this survey? For example, the, how do we access the closed-circuit TV and businesses and, you know, all of the resources that are out there? And I know you're, we're putting together the facility, the Mission Control Center, you know, that'll have a lot of TV screens and push buttons and you can get to things. So it, so I know we're, we're interested in that, we're working on that. Are there other bullet points that you take away from this that say, okay, that this confirms the direction we're going, here's our, our three takeaways, here's our five things that we, are the goals that have emerged from the Morrison study?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I mean, and that's the really proud moment of the men and women of the Police Department is because our strategic initiatives were up and running even prior to the survey being conducted by the Morrison Institute. So a lot of these items that were covered and confirmed through our residents, we were already up and running through our strategic initiative program, and we meet quite often, and we have a project manager, so we're up and running on a lot of these. So we're, we're already down a road of success on, on several of these items, and some of them are things that we can get better at, as I mentioned, and we're adding to our strategic initiatives. So we're listening to the public and we're responding, but we do have, and we, we could provide that, that action item list to Mayor and Council if they desire.
Yeah.
That's great. And it does, the reason I ask is, is because I think I know the answer, because everything that's been touched on here are things that I've heard you and then the City Manager and others talking about over the last few months. We do have, and this Council, I think, has expressed an increased emphasis on homelessness. We've been talking about that for a few years now. It's, it's good to know that the public, that we aren't out of touch with the public and that that is, that we are reflecting the attitudes and concerns of the public when we talk about that. The new paradigm as far as triage and how we respond to mental health, again, is something that I know you're well into. The body cam thing, I, I agree, it's great that all of our frontline officers have that, but it seems like we still have incidents sometimes where, that without footage, but when, if we've got detectives or other people involved in high-risk situations, and sometimes surprisingly, we don't have a video of, of those situations. So I know that's a problem we all acknowledge and we're trying to rectify. And the thing that, I, I thought this was a very positive report. On the other hand, the thing that bothers me coming out of this, and I'm sure it bothers you, is 51% of the, of the people that responded are okay with the city, with the Police Department's use of force. And the, the margin of error is plus or minus like 3.4%. So that means it's possible that a majority of the people of Mesa think that maybe we use too much force sometimes in, in, in our policing. That's not a good, you know, that's something we need to get better at. And, and there is 83% support for de-escalation training. Like, again, that's, that's a good message for us to hear and receive and, and incorporate into how we do our business going forward. Can you comment on that for me?
Yeah, yeah, sure. And Mayor, you're, you're spot on. I mean, you look at that number, and what that, what that tells me in our department is we, we need to do a better job of, of being transparent with, with our public. And, you know, we're building a transparency page that's going to have a dashboard for our use of force incidents that's live, that's updated hourly, daily, to show, you know, the number of calls we go on compared to the percentage of time that we use force, our policies on force. We tapped into our community to rebuild our use of force policies. So all those things are having a, a positive effect, and our goal is just to increase that 51% to even higher, once the understanding of use of force is a very complex issue, and, you know, it's something that we're dealing with every day. And then, and the de-escalation training is consistent with our, our training plan, and we brought the community in to go and, and, and comment on our training and then provide input on that de-escalation training, and so they're involved in that as well. So, you know, I, I know we're going down the right path, and, and, you know, the next survey we do down the road, I would expect that number to go up.
Yeah, and Mayor, I think that, on that chart too, we were just looking at it, is it's only less than, it's about 20% who disagree with the way the use of force is being conducted. So you really can't just subtract 3%, but we, we can do better. And the Chief, sometimes there's so much that we, that the Chief is implementing that will never be seen by the public. And I would just think, Chief, and I think the message that Chief is sending to a lot of the police officers is the accountability part of this. So I think the Chief is not waiting for a major incident to take place. They, they have a process where they can identify and work with officers, they maybe see trending in areas that are not, their response to the public may not be, there may be too much use of force. And so they're trying to identify those trends early on. Is that fair to say, Chief?
Yes, sir.
And, and there's a lot more, I would think you could talk to the officers, that culture and that accountability is being reinforced. And so that's not something you're going to see publicly, but I think it's more the internal, cultural, and holding people accountable. But along with that, and we can't do this without taking some responsibility, we have to train and, and help those officers understand the appropriate response when they're in those situations. And so I think the Chief has completely reviewed, revamped the training that's taking place, brought in new individuals on the training, so there's a lot of things that are happening there, because we recognize this is a significant topic. But I think when you look at the statistics, maybe Morrison can respond to this, it's, there's a pretty small number at the bottom there who are, who have a problem with use of force. So I think we can look at that and say that's probably only 20% that are at that end, where the other end is probably more supportive.
That's fair. Maybe I overstated that. I need to take a closer look at the report and see what those numbers are, but. Council, other questions regarding this agenda item?
Yes, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, and then Mr. Freeman.
I have a few questions. First of all, to Morrison, on the study, do you have any demographics as far as age? I don't know if that was part of the study, because I think there's a different perception of the younger generations of what they think policing should be, especially in this day and age of everything going on, maybe having a different perception of values, of how policing is conducted versus older generations, possibly. But I just was wondering if there was any demographic on that?
So there are demographics in the overall report for the poll. But again, we didn't break down responses by subgroups, largely because we didn't over sample for different demographics like age, because it wasn't like a primary question. Certainly, there's a number of interesting questions that could be asked. And if there were specific demographics that we were interested, we would need to make sure that we just have oversampled in a way that would allow us to be able to speak to the opinions of specific subgroups.
Right, right. Another comment I wrote to myself is, young people don't answer to their phones. You know, unless you text, it's pretty hard to get some feedback from them. And I assume that maybe age was also taken into comparison of our demographics as a city, of where our populations are, that that was at least in line with who we are as a city. Also, have you done similar studies with other cities? And how do we compare?
We have not done any polls with other cities as of yet. We have done more statewide polling previously. And sometimes we have done sort of like the county. But this is actually the smallest sort of area that we've actually polled in, in terms of just being like the city. And even though Mesa has a fairly large population, it still can be challenging to get the number of individuals and you know, especially across the kind of demographics that we were sort of waiting on. So we certainly did take that into account. And so, I mean, it's a really good question. As far as the ages, we did have participants that ranged basically from 18 to over 75 years and older. And so, you are correct in that our 18 to 24, the number of participants was about 80. And the sort of number of older participants, the 75 and older, the number of participants was about 55. So it is sort of distributed among the different age groups as well.
So those numbers, so those are actual numbers or percentages?
That's the actual numbers. So about 10% of the population, of the sample were 18 to 24. And about 7% would have been the 75 years and older. And then, you know, then there's everything in between. So the largest age demographic at 21% was the 35 to 44 age group.
And let me just jump in and say, Vice Mayor, the police department, if they haven't provided you with this version of the table report, this report has a section at the back that has all of the ages and the exact number of people in that age group who responded. Likewise, it has all of the other demographic information. How long have you lived in Mesa? What's your race? Are you, do you identify as Hispanic or Latino? So that information is all in the record for you to look at, at your leisure.
Thank you. I think overall, the report was positive for Mesa. And I think a reflection of our police department is flexible and evolving with what we need to know, we're not stagnant in how we approach policing. And I think that's reflected in the community support that we experience. I assume maybe our numbers are probably better than a lot of other cities. I'm making an assumption there. But thank you for all that you do. And you've been ahead of your time and will continue to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. For the Morrison, I think my comments tailor Councilmember Reddick and the Vice Mayor's. Is the sampling of 811 surveys, is that sufficient to generate the type of report that we need crossing all the age groups and ethnicities and races? You know, we're 500,000 plus, so I'm just asking that question.
Yes. And so we specifically sampled the Mesa population based on that, that population and all those different demographics. And so, that's why the margin of error is so low at 3%. And so, the margin of error is a function of the size of the population and the size of the sample. And so, we intended, the 811 allowed us to poll like the Mesa, but it ends up being most effective to look at the results as a Mesa as a whole, as opposed to breaking it down into these sort of various demographics.
Okay, good. Because I think some of the information that we received from this report tailors what we've been trying to work on as a mayor and council here for the past couple of years. And so this helps support some of our programs and things that we're going to be initiating and working with the police department as well as fire. So thank you for your help.
Thank you. Ms. Fieldsbury?
All my questions got answered already. So, but I wanted to thank Morrison Institute because I think this is really helpful and also our police department. It's easy to only hear negative stuff sometimes on social media. Of course, those are the people who come out. And so I think this is really, really helpful thing to see what a sampling of our whole population fills. And I love that your first statement was, we have a lot to work on. But it really was a very positive report in general. So I love that you're always working to see how you guys can be better. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Council, Mr. Thompson?
I just have one final question. On your sampling, did you do, did you work across all of Mesa? So was it equally balanced within each district? Because I know like, you know, West Mesa and East Mesa are night and day different, not only from demographics, but you know, across the board, crime rates, the whole nine yards. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was a fair representation of the city as a whole, making sure that that's what this is telling us.
Yes, sir. The sampling did take into account, we weighted it, or we tried to sample also based on zip code. So there was a distribution based on population across the different Mesa zip codes.
I think, Mayor, Council, the way to look at this is, the only way they can talk about this statistically being valid is across the entire population of the city. And yet, at the same time, they tried to make sure it included every zip code. And, but unless we go and specifically say, we're going to do this age group, or we're just going to do based on age, or we're just going to do based on race, that's a different survey. It would be different than what you would say if you're just trying to sample the entire city. And so, from this perspective, I was trying to understand, from a statistically valid exercise, what it would look like if you clicked in just the entire city regardless. Now, I think they did a good job of trying to address, making sure they sampled every zip code and you know, they were, but they can't say to you, age, race, you know, that they, gender, that this, they, we don't do, we didn't go into that level, because then it'd be a different survey. So, but I think we can say across the city, as you look at the entire population of the city, all blended together, this is statistically valid. I think that's correct. I took one, I did take a couple of statistic classes in my master's program. That's all I remember. So.
All right. Well, thank you. I've made this comment before, but I've shared the impression I've had when I've gone on police ride alongs, that we changed the name of the Mesa Fire Department to the Mesa Fire and Medical Department a few years ago, because it just tells the story more accurately as to what that department is. And it's been, I was impressed, again, when I'm in a police car, I think this ought to be the Mesa Police and Mental Health Department, because it seems like 90% of what you do, the root, you know, cause that we're addressing there, in some way, it's substance abuse, mental health. I mean, that's really what you're targeting and what's causing. And that's reflected, I think, in what we've seen here, in the public's perception of, we need a paradigm that acknowledges that reality. And so I know you're doing that.
Yeah. And next week, Mayor, we'll have that conversation.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, let's, we're going to double back now on the agenda to reviewing our agenda for Monday night for the special council meeting, which is the hearing on our fiscal year 2021, I'm sorry, 2122 budget. Council, any specific questions you want to, I think Vice Mayor, did you have a question on, you wanted to raise on that?
Yeah, I just had a question on, especially when I look at our debt service on the pie chart. And it's a matter of just understanding how things fit together. The debt service is like 199 million or so. And I know on our secondary property tax, which is part of our meeting, is about 45 million. And so, I just wanted to know what is totally compromised, comprises the 199 million?
Which, which, are you looking?
On the pie chart on?
The one that says total city budget expenditures?
Yeah. And the second?
Yeah. So Vice Mayor, remember, when you're talking about total city budget, it'll include not only the secondary property tax, the GEO debt, but the whole city includes utilities too.
Okay. So it's also looking at enterprise?
Enterprise.
Yeah, that's why you said the city budget is everything. So water, sewer, gas, electric, all those, including the debt for their plus?
So our property, secondary property tax comes as our general obligation?
Yep.
Bond debt.
So it'd be a portion of that, but not, the majority of that's going to be in the enterprise.
But that's what we use our secondary property tax for. And so, the total debt will includes our enterprise?
Yep, yep. Water, sewer, gas, electric. What am I missing?
Excise.
Excise tax.
Excise tax.
So that'd be like for the, like when we issue debt to pay for the Cub Stadium, that would be that kind of excise tax. So this includes everything in here.
Okay. All right. And I know we have it probably somewhere in this budget, if I look at it again, the breakdown of each one of those categories of what is the total debt service?
Sure. Oh, by each of those funds, by the general fund? Yes. We, and I don't know if it's in these pies, but it's certainly in the adopted budget. We can share that with you.
Okay. I'll look for that. All right. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you.
Mayor, there's so many other questions. Council, I would like, just to make sure we're, just a little change from what we've talked about in most recently. As you know, we brought to council the discussion regarding public safety specifically for fire, the pay plan that's included in the budget. And the council endorsed that plan. If you recall, one of the items that we talked about was making an adjustment to a small group of employees, 40, 45 employees, who compared to Chandler, for example, had, were behind in pay for a couple of years. And at the time, or last time we met on that topic, we talked about making that adjustment and bringing them and reconciling that number over a two-year period. Since, and I've met with the, with Mary Camilli, our fire chief, she's talked to me and expressed ask for me and to present to council about maybe the possibility, some of the comments that came back, why can't the city, can't we do that in just one year? Essentially effectively making that, all that adjustment this coming July. And as we've looked at the budget impacts and the number of employees that that would be included, I would recommend to the council, if you're okay with this, we would just make the adjustment in the budget to, instead of taking that, making that adjustment over two years, we would completely get that adjustment completed in this first year. And so that's, if, I just want to make sure council's okay with that. I don't know if it takes any formal action, but we would include that in the budget that you're considering on Monday. And just FYI, I think I gave, I shared this with you sometime in a previous update, we've already completed the discussions with the police union. And they've also agreed to a different plan where they're receiving $2,500 for all employees for the next two years. And then they'll go on the 5% schedule after that. And then just the third part of all this is, we talked a little bit about this last week, or when we were talking about the federal dollars coming and doing the premium pay for physicians, employees who worked during the pandemic. We, as you recall, we made an adjustment to, or provided to our all in city employees, a payment of $2,000 in January of last year. As you can imagine, that was very popular. And we, as we see where the budget is going today, I would like to at least suggest to the council that we're strongly looking at that as a possibility going into this coming January also. As you know, there's a lot of challenges out there for recruiting employees, retaining employees, just because the labor market as it is today. But we also think some of that cost could be offset by the federal dollars we're receiving. So what I'd like to have council, one is concur that we would do the adjustment for firefighters in essentially this July pay period. And that we would hold, and right now, the plan is to make an adjustment or provide for all employees, right now at $2,000 in January, as part of, you know, recognizing the, how important our city employees are and sacrifices they've made. But frankly, in this labor market right now, I think that's important. What that will do is in addition to the 3% that they'll receive in July, that $2,000, I think we figured out for the average employee is probably another, equals about 3% or so, maybe a little bit more for some. So that's a pretty good in one year. It's going to be cumulatively a 6% increase, which I think is the right thing to do, especially now, and recognizing the effort of our employees. And we want to keep them, and we want to make sure that they're happy working with the city of Mesa. So those are just, all that can be managed within the budget, and we would include that in the budget. So I just want to make sure council's agreeable to those, I don't know, adjustments or whatever in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. I know we have some comments. Mr. Freeman?
I just had a simple question of what that figure was that will be shifting into absorbing this year instead of spreading out over two years.
Oh, sorry. The additional cost was 800,000? What was the number?
It was about $400,000 difference between the two, one year versus a two-year implementation.
Yeah. Oh, it was 800,000 total. Right.
Was that for the firefighter in, wrapping those 10 or 12 firefighters into the first year?
Yeah. So everybody would be caught up, yeah.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, the original implementation was all of the firefighters, half in one year and half the other year.
Correct.
And this would be pulling it all forward into what, the first fiscal year, so it'd be about a $400,000 impact to the first year. And then it would be the same to the second year, because they were going to get that anyway.
Sure. So, yeah, I support that. I mean, that's, to me, just helps with the morale of the department and those firefighters out there on the front lines. And then as far as the other monies you're talking about, I think that's a wise move. And is that the American Rescue Act?
Well, so we'd use part, what I'd like to do is fund some of that from there. There's, physicians are eligible, fund it from that, and the balance would come from the general fund. Because I, right now, we are, we need to make sure we keep our positions filled. We don't want to lose anybody. And I think if we can tell them they have $2,000 coming to them in January, hopefully that'll keep them around. Because everybody right now is, labor is the big issue. So.
Yeah, I just, I got a notice from another municipality that to recruit police officers, they were doing incentives and lateral transfers and things like that to help bolster their police force. So we need to be on top of that game.
Yep.
Chief Costley, he did. Regardless, he's got representatives here. So we need to carry that message forward. So, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Chris, can we, at some point, start looking at steps and eliminating steps? So that, because I think the step increases that we do, those steps are what gets us into these issues where we have the subpar pay or what have you?
Everybody, every, every city uses steps.
Yeah, I hate stops.
I know, but it's, otherwise, you can't assure the employees what they're going to receive. A step is only saying you're going to get an increase. Really, the term has been abused lately. The pay plan has been abused lately. The conversation really is, how much are you going to pay employees each year? And what does that look like? And so, what we're always saying is, the pay plan's not, there's nothing wrong with the pay plan. The question really is, how much should that increase be each year? In the current pay plan we have, you can do 3%, you can do 5%, you could do 7%. It's just, it's just a number on a scale. But what it helps us from an HR perspective is, everybody understands where the mid-
But what it helps us from an HR perspective is, everybody understands where the mid, when they're doing hiring, what the range, you have to have a range. You'd have to say, what's the minimum pay for that position? What's the maximum pay for that position? Everybody wants to know. And then we look at hiring, sometimes we allow them to hire at the midpoint. And then there's just, steps are just the increments, right? It's just between the top and the bottom of a range, which most cities are very similar as far as between the bottom of the range and the top of the range. I want to say there's a difference of about, I think it was 20%, 19, 20% where John go, right? Does that sound right? Yeah, something like that. So those ranges are very similar. And, and what the question becomes is, how much are we going to increase pay each year for employees? Some years it could be three, some years it could be four. And what we're proposing for public safety is, in three years, in two years, that number's going to be 5% each year. So it's, it's not, there's nothing wrong with the step. The step is just picking a point on a dot between, but, and every city uses it, and it's a way for all the cities to really be able to have a market and look at it.
It just seems like we, we end up, and I hate to use the word punished, but those folks that have been in a position for a long time, and I think last time I used the, the example of, of maybe a patrol officer, that that's all they've ever wanted to do is be a patrol officer. They have no ambition to become a sergeant.
Right.
They love being on the street, but at some point in time, they top out. And so their pay scale, you know, they see others that may get promoted and so forth, you know, advance quicker on the pay scale, even though.
Yeah, but two things going on. There is an incentive pay now for senior patrol officers. So there, there is pay for that. And that is probably the one reason why the police department chose to take the $2,500 per employee as their pay plan because it goes to every employee regardless of whether at the top of the range or not. So even your more, and so that, one of the reasons I proposed that to the police department was for that very point, you know, is, we recruit very well. We have very competitive pay at the beginning. But also, to your point, we want to recognize patrol officers who decide, I, I just want to be a patrol officer. Chief told me, he just retired out a 30-year police officer who worked graves the entire career. And there's great value in having senior officers out in the field. So we have addressed that by having financial incentives for longer-term patrol officers. And the pay plan that they've agreed to, it gives every employee, regardless of how much time they have in the police department, $2,500. So that's a pretty significant impact. And then if you recall, last January, we actually increased the top of the range for all employees. So they've got, they've gotten the full benefit adjustment. So the top does get adjusted. That's what we've committed to every, we've done this all the time. Every two years, for most cities are on the schedule, they review that range, and we all look at each other and see how much, you know, they adjust at the top of the range and the bottom of the range, and then we try to stay about in that just average or above average part. Right now, on the firefighters, we're the highest. You know, as we do the survey, we'll look at, see what everybody else is doing. We'll make those adjustments every two years.
Okay. Thank you, other comments on this? Mr. Reddya.
I have a question on a budgetary issue. I'm not sure if there's more.
Yeah, so maybe just to wrap this up, I, I think, Mr. Smith, correct me, I'm going to say maybe we don't call for a vote to make these amendments right now because we are literally voting for this at our next, on Monday. And I think, thank you for informing us that this has been tweaked to reflect this, these changes. I certainly endorse these changes. I think the comment that, that some of us made when this was first brought to our attention, the pay disparity on the, on the mid-year firefighters, was just, let's fix it, period. Let's not do anything that suggests that we're playing games on this, let's just fix it. And so I think doing it all in one year so that there's no confusion, nobody thinks that, you know, I need to look at a chart and, you know, pull out my calculator to see if I'm, if I'm being fairly competent, but we're just going to fix it.
And, yeah.
And, and the same is true of the $2,000 bonus. Again, you're right, as I talk to, to business people right now, they are all uniformly crying about employment. They can't, it's tough to find good employees right now. So we need to be, City of Mesa needs to be a lot of things. One of them is we need to be a good employer. And, and so I certainly endorse those, those suggestions and look forward to voting for them.
So, yeah, Mayor, I think that's why we're saying we could vote on that on Monday.
Yeah.
As part of the adopted budget.
I see Mr. Smith nodding his head. We don't need to make those, give a thumbs up to that today because we're voting on it on Monday.
Correct, you've given enough direction today, it'll be included in the budget.
Okay, thank you. So moving on then from public safety compensation, Mr. Reddya, what questions?
Question on, there's a discussion at the state legislature around a flat tax and seeing the concerning part of how it affects cities. I'm not sure if Mr. Butler or anybody can answer.
I think every employee would like to line up and answer this question.
Answer the status of that discussion and maybe monitoring because how, if that is passed, the detrimental, I think it's $25 million a year that it affects City of Mesa. So just wondering what's that discussion and how we're preparing if something like that happens, right? So.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Harretti, you're, you're exactly right. The initial proposal is pretty devastating to all cities and towns, including Mesa. And while I certainly have learned over the years, you can never predict the Arizona Legislature, one thing I feel pretty certain in saying is that there are substantial changes to the tax package that's being discussed right now. And I, I don't think the final package will have nearly the impact, if, if any, impact on cities and towns. Those negotiations are going on right now. I, I don't think it's out of turn to say that already there's been substantial movement from leadership in the governor's office to address the concerns of trying to hold cities harmless or almost harmless out of this. I can't say that there might not be some impact on us, but I think it will be substantially less than what was contemplated under the initial package.
Right, but Mayor, Councilman Harretti, just to give you, based on the initial proposal, right? We did try to do a calculation on that, and it ultimately was, was 26?
Yes.
$26 million impact to the city's general fund budget?
When fully implemented.
When it's fully implemented.
And that affects, is it the state shared sales tax or?
Mayor, Councilmember Harretti, that, that actually impacts just the income tax revenue we would receive. So currently, we receive about 74 million annually. That would drop it down to 50 million annually.
And Mayor, Councilmember Harretti, the way that the League of Cities and Towns and others have been addressing this is we receive 15%, cities and towns receive 15% of that allocation, and that was an agreement struck decades ago so that cities would forego collecting their own income tax locally and would share through the state. And, and the discussions that we're having right now have been centered around the fact of, the state can set its tax policy, but it should do it in a way that holds cities harmless from that impact. So what we're looking at is changing that percentage, increasing that percentage that cities and towns share of the state's allocation from, I think our total hold harmless amount is somewhere in the range of 18 and a half percent. So you would be changing from 15% of the state's allocation to cities receiving somewhere around 18 and a half percent of the state's allocation. So that's where the negotiations kind of center at this point. That being said, I, I think, Mayor and counsel, it's fair to say though that there's still concern in the legislature from the majority party about implementing a tax, a flat tax at all. And that there are some members who have said they're not going to vote for a flat tax. And so the, the very question of whether we're talking about those percentages or if it's back to a one-time cut or something more in line with what the governor had initially proposed, which was a $600 million tax cut that was substantially different than the flat tax that emerged over the last month or so at the legislature.
Thank you for the question.
Ms. Pillsbury.
This is on 1A, so are we off the budget?
Well, 1A is for the, 1A of the special counsel meeting amendment?
Oh, yeah, sure, go ahead.
I should turn my mic on. I just had a question slash comment. So the story presented there was that it was going to be, the estimated impact was $28, and it's only $10 for median, for the median homeowner. And so yesterday, City of Mesa posted on their social media that there was an intent to increase taxes, and people just freak out when they see that. And so in the, in the post, there's nothing about the Mesa Moves Transportation. It just says the general obligation bonds, there's nothing about the $28 to the $10. And I'm just wondering, how we could communicate that story better?
We need to do a better job of communicating and do it better the way you did it, by talking about the value you get for $10 is the street improvements and the park, the canal pathways. So we will, we'll work on that and do a better job of explaining that.
Okay, well, just because I, I don't think most people are watching council meetings. They're not clicking on the link to go look up the presentations. And so when there's no more details and all you see is there's a secondary property tax increase, people just aren't happy about that. And so there's a lot of negative comments on there, and I've seen other people posting, did you hear Mesa's going to increase their secondary property tax? When really, it's an incredible, you know, story.
Yeah.
So we just need to do better.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know that there's a question necessary, but necessarily.
Fair enough, that was a good comment.
Yeah, and maybe I could just add one comment, Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury. Unfortunately, yesterday, when the post was, state law requires that we notify, provide a notice of intent to increase a tax or a fee. And unfortunately, the timing wasn't good because there is a report attached that has some information that discusses the, the use of, the reason for the, the adjustment. And the city's website just happened to be down yesterday at that time. And so some people I noticed on the, on the post couldn't access the report that is attached that has.
Which makes it look like we're hiding something.
So I, I think that did complicate the, the issue a little bit, but like Chris said, we can definitely provide more information.
So, I mean, it's okay to put more details like that on a post because I recognize.
Well, he did it as an attachment so he could go see what it.
Yeah, I recognize the post is, is a legal thing we have to do. But as, from a communication level, so much of the perception of our city is, is a breakdown of communication, right? So if we could communicate better, then people will understand better what we're doing.
We can do that.
Okay.
So then would it be fair to say that on Monday, when we have this agenda item, I would love to just say, staff, can you give us a quick presentation? Or maybe a lengthy presentation on what this means? And, and certainly you're, you're going to want to say, well, the voters approved a $100 million street bond at the last election. That gets paid for, and so as of necessity, that means the property taxes are, are the source for that. Here's the good news, when we went to the voters, we said this is going to cost the average homeowner $28, it's actually 10. So, I mean, we just.
We can go through that presentation.
We need to say that.
That would also be assuming people watch the council.
No one was watching.
So that's why I'm focused on the social media post.
We'll do both, we'll do both, we'll do both.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Pillsbury, you're exactly right. That, we, we did not communicate that well yesterday, and we have to do better than the way that was communicated. We've got to put it in context because, like you said, there's a lot of people that don't understand these were voter approved, they don't understand the magnitude of those changes. We've, we've got to communicate that in context, and, and that was not our best effort yesterday. We apologize for that.
I just like everything more simplified, more communicated, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Any other questions about Monday's hearing on the budget? Or the special counsel meeting?
And then I guess Mayor and Vice Mayor Duff, I just want to make one comment on your question for that, just to kind of be clear on when we're adopting an annual budget. The budget that you're adopting is, are the five schedules that are attached to the resolution. So on the question regarding debt service, we'll be happy to give you the breakdown of that. It is not listed on those schedules because it's not a required schedule for adoption, just by fund. And so you'll just see that same debt services kind of number. We're happy to give you any background or details that we can for that. But the Monday adoption is the resolution adopting those five schedules. And then later, we come out with the, the executive budget plan that has details about how we are implementing the budget, what we plan to do, compensation services, all those types of things. But the budget itself is just a statutory requirement of what we need to do for the state of Arizona.
But we'll give you a split out between the secondary and the utility enterprise fund debt.
Right.
Mr. Freeman.
I'd go back to the regular agenda.
Oh, okay, great, yeah, so, thank you. So well, we're, we're done talking about the, the special counsel meeting on Monday. Additional questions regarding the agenda for the regular meeting on Monday?
Yeah, I was just going to point out 4M of the studios at the Mesa Center were in the last GMP, so that'll put the finishing touches on, on the studios, right? I mean.
Is that our last GMP from?
That's what it says here.
I think so, it's the third one, right? Yeah, I think that sounds right. Mark's saying yes.
And that'll be ready for use in.
What'd you say, was it 20, is it fall of 2022? Yeah, fall of 2022.
Everything's happening in 2022, is what I understand.
Get your ribbons out, scissors.
And then Mayor, maybe 6C may or may not remain on the consent agenda. That's the sports fields on North Center Street, so. Unless there's some blue cards pulled for.
Yeah, you may have, that's fine, yeah.
Some concern on that, otherwise, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Any other questions regarding Monday's meetings? Hearing then, the next item on our agenda is item three, and we'll take items A, B, and C together. This is acknowledging receipt of minutes. Would someone like to make that motion? Thank you, Mr. Thompson, seconded by Vice Mayor Duff. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next item is current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know you guys have been very busy. Who would like to begin? Mr. Thompson.
Pulling my notes. I attended, this week I attended with Natalie, White House Roundtable, talk about affordable housing. Actually asked if they would meet with us to really talk about the ins and outs because I asked the question of, how do you, how do you fund affordable housing long-term? And nobody had an answer, and that's something that, that we have to figure out if we're going to do affordable housing. Also joined on a virtual meeting on the MAG Regional Board and listened to their discussion on homelessness. That was quite interesting. And then most of us on council attended the Mesa hydration donation kickoff yesterday at the United Food Bank. This year's goal is 400,000 bottles. Like I said, 400,000 cases, I'd like to see that. So let's put the challenge out there for everyone, but 400,000 bottles. So if you're, next time you're at a store, pick up a case, a, a bottle or a pallet and donate that. And then last week, I joined in on a roundtable discussion with Senator Kelly and Arizona Homeland Security Director Tim Romer. It was quite an interesting discussion about, not only about border security, but about cybersecurity as well. And so some scary stuff going on out there in the, in the real world. That was it.
Great, thank you. Other comments, counsel? Vice Mayor?
Yes, last week, was it last week or the week before? I have to look back on my calendar. I attended the Mesa Fire and Medical Department firefighter recruit graduation ceremony for the class of 21-1, always inspiring to see these young people stepping up and being exceptional individuals and, and joining our fire department as well as other cities. I also attended a National League of Cities Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources Committee meeting in which we talked about the American Rescue Plan and infrastructure and how to apply that to our cities. There'll be continued conversations this summer in our National League meetings. I also attended a MAG Human Community and Services, whatever, I always forget the name of the meeting, but we talked about the homeless study in which you mentioned that they, it's a very comprehensive and it's in a draft situation, but they'll soon have that available on the website. And it is comprehensive in the, of the entire county and how we can address homelessness together. I think it was a very good study that was done. And I attended the hydration kickoff yesterday. And I wanted to mention, in addition to all the bottles and cases that we need to provide, there are options on the website of mesaz.com/h2oMesa to make a donation to refill stations. So at various places, public places around the city, you can refill your bottle and not always have to access where water is. And so that is especially important to our vulnerable communities. I know we have one at the library in the Mesa Arts Center and Positive Cristo and a number of other ones that are not coming to mind. But to expand that, they're accepting donations to put more refill stations in our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Other comments, counsel? I'll just underline what's been said on, on the H2O donation. It really is up to every, for us to be, this is a life and death issue in our, in our city. There will people, there will be people unfortunately this summer that pass away as a result of the heat and the, and the lack of water. And our response to that situation has really got to be very, very strong. So it, for everyone, when you're in the grocery store, don't walk out without an extra, you know, every time you go for the next few months, pick up an extra case of water and drop it off at a fire station or one of the other locations in our community that are accepting those. Mr. Brady, what does our current, what does our schedule of meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, we have the Cub.
Of course, we have the upcoming council meeting on Monday, and then we'll have the, another study session next week, and again, we talked about bringing the behavioral health program to you a week from today, so we have some, and I think the week after that, we'll be bringing the Climate Action Plan. So we have a full schedule of June topics for you to discuss.
Great, looking forward to it.